We do have a PowerPoint.
I hear that.
Chalk your head off.
Your head's been chalked off before. So I'll go quick, to the point. It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting an order. First item on our agenda is public input period. If there's anyone that wishes to address council, seeing none, Mr. Littlejohn, I see you're good. You always a delegation. Seeing none, move right along to adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? Sorry? Oh, with the addition, yeah. With the addition of this letter to the Minister of Environment? Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, so will this add it to the agenda? Is there a mover? For looming discussion, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Adoption of minutes. Is there a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on March tenth be adopted? Move by. More second by. Wallace, discussion on those. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, carried. A motion that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council on the tenth be adopted and the recommendations within be approved. Move by. Blooming, second by. Wallace, discussion.
In these minutes, we have Counselor Speren as absent, and yet I believe that she made a motion. Did I catch the right one here? Oh, shoot, maybe I'm in the wrong minutes. Maybe it was in the other one.
You can give me a call tomorrow.
Either way.
Yeah, we can figure it out. If she was here all of a minute, minutes. Is that okay to everybody?
I think she may have showed up later.
Yep, I think she wasn't. So, okay, with that, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Delegations and delegations, Mr. Littlejohn, please come forward, and I'm sorry I don't.
So I'm Kristin L. You've seen me before, and I'm the local Kootenai liaison for the Carbon Neutral Kootenai Project. Dale Littlejohn's from Vancouver, and he's...
We won't hold that against him.
He spoke in trail this afternoon, so it's my turn. Sorry.
Okay, so we'll get you set up for the PowerPoint, and... They do this on purpose, by the way.
Page up, page down, right here? Page up, page down, okay. All right, and I'm still in here. Grand Storm, would you make you leave your seat?
No, that's okay. You can get at it.
Yeah, I can see. Thank you. Page up, page down. Okay, so I'll just get started. I'm with Community Energy Association. I've been on the Carbon Neutral Kootenai Project for five years. I'm here this evening to celebrate five years of collaboration and leadership here with the city of Roseland. You have seen me a few times. I was on the Kootenai Energy Diet last year, and then also you won an award from UBCM on the Roseland Energy Diet, and I'm here to present that. So we'll get right into it. Okay, just a reminder here, there's community and corporate emissions. We're here this evening. Carbon Neutral Kootenai is about corporate emissions, which is your local government operations and infrastructure, saving money on recreation, anything that you're saving money and energy on anything that your corporation is responsible for versus the community side, which is on residential, commercial, and institutional buildings. These are measured through provincial initiatives. Some communities have an energy manager, and that's your community side. Just to remind you why we're, how this all started back in 2008, there was Climate Charter, Action Charter, and the local governments that did sign it, it was voluntary, but they were asked to achieve three goals. One was to be carbon neutral in respect to their operations by 2012. This has been modified slightly, and now the local governments are working towards, or have the option of just working towards being carbon neutral. The Carbon Neutral Kootenai Project was an amazing collaborative response to all the local governments that signed the Climate Action Charter in this area, three regional districts combined with Columbia Basin Trust, the first and only initiative of its kind to work collaboratively together to help you as local governments measure, act, and lead in your emissions of your corporation. There's the assets all told in the big region is about 400 buildings, 1,000 vehicles, 20,000 tons of carbon emissions in the area, and $11 million spent annually on energy. Collectively, the project has allowed us to provide services to small local governments that would have been impossible on a one-on-one basis. This is sort of the timeline of the project. We went through a measure, plan, act, lead course of action. In 2009, we started, we had over 200 hours of person days, sorry, 200-person days of training, and we helped all of the local governments to do the inventories of their buildings and fleets to learn what was being spent on energy and consequently what the emissions were. Moving into planning, carbon neutral action plans were created for a lot of the communities acting. A lot of joint procurement opportunities, implementing in your, within your corporations how to reduce emissions, and moving on to lead, developing local reduction projects like the Kootenai Energy Diet, and some of the local governments did purchase offsets to be carbon neutral. Again, a little bit of a documentation. All of our information is available either on the CEA website or the, which is Community Energy Association, or the Columbia Basin Trust. Lots of opportunities for education, planning documents, fuel efficiency for municipal fleets. We do have a Carbon Neutral Action Guide that could be used as a template if Roseland was interested in... I'm not sure if you have your own Carbon Neutral Action Plan or not, but that's available. We have some upcoming education. We have Fuel Efficiency for Municipal Fleet. There's one more course coming up at the end of April, or Smart Driver in the City also at the end of April. And we have a number of webinars. The ones that have happened have been recorded, and there are a couple coming up before the end of the project. Here, just in the Kootenai Boundary, again, the project has supported all local, all 31 local governments in the area. Midway in the Regional District of Kootenai Boundary was the one that chose to be carbon neutral, and that's why it's highlighted. As you can see, everybody has participated to some extent in the project, and you were able to pick and choose, and some of the local governments have commented on how they liked that about this project. It was there if they needed, but they certainly didn't feel obliged. And again, we have policies. We've done inventory. I know we helped Roseland move over to smart tools to be able to continue with your inventory over the years. Some of the inventory, the Carbon Neutral Kootenai inventory trends, we're seeing a strong progress on reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the area. They have, we've been reduced 10%. The figures I have were something like in 2008, the base year, there were 19,000 tons of carbon emission, and in 2012, the last year, we had data for with 17,000 carbon emissions. The energy has been holding steady in the area, all 31 local governments. We don't have as good... We're not as confident with the data we have on energy consumption, but it's because we often have to estimate it because of the way that, what's available to us, but it's holding its own. Just a little bit about carbon funds. A lot of, all the local governments have the Climate Action Incentive Program grants coming back, so there's $423,000 in the area coming back to the communities. Plus, including Roseland, many have developed a carbon fund, and there's over $400,000 in that fund. We've kept Nelson separate, as they have a, they have a separate fund of 1.2 million, which they are calling... Sorry, I can't remember what they're calling it, but they have a different thing. Anyway, so there's about $800,000 available in the area to work towards local reduction projects. Some of the opportunities include more home energy retrofits. I know that Roseland is really, really big on that. She's with both the Roseland Energy Diet and the Kootenai Energy Diet. There's also an organics diversion is another type of project being piloted in Grand Forks. Just as the project was, has continued along in the time, it started out with a resources capacity and commitment from external advisors, but there's been almost a technology transfer, and now the local government's elected officials have been, have been trained and much more information and local expertise. Finish up. Post-Carbon Neutral Kootenais, we, the staff will be required to report annually on their CARIP and their carbon neutral status every March. You need to continue implementing any of the energy audits that you have had on your buildings, just measuring, or doing the recommendations. Our project will be helping you calculate the impact from the local reduction project. So Roseland did participate in the energy diet, and there are, there will be data available that you can use towards, use towards offsetting or against your offsets, and we will be giving you that data. And then also just further identifying and implementing local reduction projects. Just on the side there is your own inventory of what you as a corporation are responsible for. And we will be having a steering committee meeting in April with the Regional District staff. Again, they, to see how Regional Districts can assist smaller communities in continuing the, being carbon neutral. So some Regional District staff may be available to ask questions of, again, Community Energy Association is still here, even though the project is ending, and we will answer questions too. And I think that, that sums up the projects. I am not Dale. Dale's here, the project manager. I'm Patricia Denell, P. Denell at Community Energy Association, at CommunityEnergy.pc.ca. There was just, and yeah, that's it, I guess.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Is there any questions of Mr. Denell or Mr. Littlejohn, who apparently doesn't want to speak to us?
Well, I did. I just wanted to give...
No, and I think that was great, so I'll ask council if there's any questions. Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay, well, you're so welcome. Good work, Tim Rossland. Thank you very much for your opinion.
Recommendations from staff for decision, request for council decision, that council go second reading the official Kootenai Plan Amendment bylaw 2564, and bylaw that removes a proposed collective open schedule of the transportation planning. And further, the council's schedule of public hearing on April 14th. Is there a mover to that? Move by Fisher, second by Thatcher. Discussion, Fisher?
No, not really.
Thatcher?
No, there is no, no opposition to it, so I don't see any problem at all.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carried. Information items, motion to receive the information items and act on them as the recommendations within. Is there a mover to that? Move by Wallace, second by Fisher. Discussion on the items. Too easy on me tonight, okay? Anybody? Oh, we'll start with Thatcher. You got anything? I'll come back.
Yeah, I'll come back.
Ball.
I'm trying to open my comments. I know there was at least one.
Okay, well, I'll go back to more, start over there, and she might have a few. Go ahead.
I have lots. D-H-I-J-K-L.
Mr. Fisher?
We have D-H-I-J-K-L. I'll bring them down.
I know, but I just thought I'd help you over there.
Thanks, buddy. No, that's fine.
Okay, and if we miss one, we'll come back. Blooming? Got it, girl. Back over there, we're good?
Yeah, I was just, there was the K.
K is there, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start with C, if that's all right, and if we miss one, we can always come back. Who had C was councilman.
Okay, I just noticed here, now, the first time that we discussed this, 136 people rode the shuttle per day with the report on the, not that many in the shuttle, but we're going to be calling it, so.
The free bus, how's that?
Anyway, yeah, anyway, I just, you know, then the next time we were given a presentation, the wording was change to passengers, but I still, every report I've seen since is back to people, and so I'm just going to make a comment again, I guess, that, you know, in ridership studies, it's more accurate and comfortable for me, I guess, to be, you know, fares or passengers used as the language, because people really, you know, the, that means something else, right? That means 136 people, whereas that's how it is, it's 136 fares per day. And being that we are attached to this, you know, we've paid for most of it, and we're part of the project, and we're going to be known province-wide for it, I feel a lot more comfortable with, you know, the more accurate description, with having verbiage that doesn't sound like we're trying to make it sound better, right? Just the data is what the data is, and we should be proud of that. And anyway, so anything that's going to go outside of this town, it would feel so much better if we could actually call it, you know, fares or something a bit more accurate like that. So I don't know if, do we, so, do we have an official liaison to that Tourism Roseland Board right now?
Not official, because they haven't changed the bylaws yet, but I certainly think that we could send them a note asking them to differentiate between people and fares.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I mean, it's maybe 15 years of working in science labs where it's like the data is what it is, and it's just grilling me, so maybe it's individual to me, but...
And I, if you, yeah, if you want to make a motion to ask for that information from Tourism Roseland, we can do that.
Okay, yeah, what I word, something like that, though.
Perhaps just to ask Tourism Roseland to differentiate between people and fares, the numbers of fares, the numbers of people, something like that?
Yeah, there we go. So I moved that, that report regarding, even just keep Tourism Roseland, there's reports regarding this project, differential between fares and people. There we go.
Perfect. Seconder? Second by Fisher. Further discussion?
I have a question. I don't actually understand the difference between people and fare. If they say 136 people versus 136 fares, what actually is the difference?
I think you can go to the chair. We'll start with that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But that's okay, but I think that...
Because I know this has come up before, and I never quite understood it.
But a person could be the same person all day. A fare is separate.
Person, same person all day, so the person gets on the free bus and just stays on the bus.
But he could be using it five times a day. A fare would be, all at council, I believe it's you. Yeah.
Exactly how I'd explain it. It's the people that's a, you know, a person is an entity that, you know, whereas generally with fares, and it's just a ridership study model. I mean, it's not just, it's not just coming from me, but people, a person that's an entity that, that gives the impression that there are, I mean, generally when you're on a bus, you're going to a pro, right? So if you, this makes it sound like actually there are 136 times two, or times, you know, 1.5 fares, but I don't know. Anyway, it's, it just seems to me that it should be more accurate with the actual language used in ridership reports. Because this is somewhat misleading, and I've heard this from other people in the community also, so it's not, it's not just me, but it isn't just me, I guess, being technical this way, but...
No, I think this is pretty easy.
So in the sense of fares, to the chair, to a council, I'm just trying to understand. So it would more be like half of that, because a person rides the bus, they ride the bike, the bus out, and then they ride the bus back, so that's two fares, but it's one person. Is that right?
Well, okay, right, and so that's where the misleading myth comes, because it's actually, I mean, we're not, there's no assumption, this hasn't been accurately measured, if it is two fares per person, right? That's never been measured, so we can't say either way, but fares is what they're measuring. They're actually measuring, you know, how many times money's been plugged in there.
So you just want to replace the word people with the word fare, and then we're happy?
Well, except we haven't, we haven't actually plugged in money, but anyway, you get what I'm saying.
Right. Just replace the word people with fare. That's what you want.
And have the data that reflects fares, not reflects people.
Yeah, even riders, exactly, just not, yeah.
Okay, councilor, all.
Can I suggest ride maybe is more accurate than fare, given that it's a green box?
Good point.
We'll amend the, yeah, we'll amend the fare to ride. Is that fine with you?
Ride or rider, ride. Yeah, I think it's the rides. That's what, that's what you're getting at. So 136 rides may actually mean if you had people riding the bus four times per day, then it's actually, you know, that one's to be fixed.
And I just, because I already said, councilor, I appreciate going to the chair. Okay, so with, with... So with that friendly amendment, I'm going to call and vote on that to, okay? So on that motion, I'll put it opposed. Carried, thank you. Any further on C? D?
D was me. That is the LCCDT Employment Recruitment Sponsorship Request, and I just, you know, just a little background, I mean, we all know there's an upcoming labor shortage in our area due to retirements in all sectors, all of that. One of the main comments heard by the consultants who were hired to do this project, this Work West Kootenai thing, was when they were outside our area looking at potential employees, potential residents, whatever, people didn't know that much about our area, like if they were looking in Kelowna or Vancouver, wherever they were doing their little studies of what, you know, what people know about our area, they didn't know. So part of the goal of this project was to educate and do outreach for, you know, for these other areas to educate people both on the lifestyle that's available here and employment opportunities that are available here. So the LCCDT is working with local employers and municipalities to sort of raise our regional profile. Now, we had said in our strategic plan that we wanted to, that we value our relationships with our regional partners, and so even though we chose not to contribute the $1,720 that would officially make us part of the LCCDT, this, if we did a tier one sponsorship, which would be $500, would be a way to show that we actually do value our regional partners and that we also are interested in attracting new people to our community. So this is what, I mean, it's a pretty small thing that we can do. Anyway, so I would like to make a motion that we allocate $500 to tier one sponsorship for the Work West Kootenai Project.
Seconder?
I'll second.
Discussion, councilor?
Yeah, pretty much said what I wanted to say about it.
The thing I would say on it is, is there had been a lot of studies that I've kind of looked at, one from Suncor College a number of years ago on how we were going to be short employees, and then a couple other things that locally, I think, Community Futures had some stuff, and the LCIC had some other information that was out there. And to some extent, some of us private sector folks have been kind of banking on that, and I haven't really seen it, and what I've seen more of is a transition from a person's choice to live here, working in a lower-paid job, and then moving up into a job that's become available at a higher rate of pay. So I'll give you an example, just in general terms, a ski school instructor. Been a ski school instructor, and they really want to live in Roseland for a number of years, and does odd jobs in carpentry in the summer, and then there's a job opens up at tech, and they get that job, and that's how these jobs have been filled, rather than necessarily a big onslaught of new people coming in. And I've seen it all over Fruitvale, Citizens, Trail, younger people, I mean, and Roseland folks, and I'm just wondering when we're going to actually hit the... And I'm not throwing hammers at it, I'm just saying, has anybody actually done a study on that? Maybe we're underemployed. A lot of people are underemployed in the region, and now they're filling into their next level of employment, if you know what I mean? So just, that's why I'm speaking to it. I don't mind that we give them $500, but I don't know if they're looking under the right rock.
Just talking about. So anybody else?
Well, just, just to make sure that we're clear on the funding here, Roseland did contribute our portion, which would be around 16%, of, 16, 17% of the $140,000 that is running the LCI this year. So please don't allow the LCCDT, et cetera, to say that Roseland has not funded the LCI. We have. And as far as the LCCDT goes, it is supposed to be an open organization, open to anyone who wants to participate at a membership of $10 per head. So that's the way it's supposed to run. As far as Roseland saying no to the $1,700, I mean, that's this long, long-going debate about the funding of the LCCDT, that the LCCDT assumes that the funding should be there for them. I mean, that's been running for five years now, that if we just keep asking for it, we'll just keep getting it. So I, I just, I have a difficulty with this organization continually asking for more funds. This is coming from Terry Van Horn, who works for the LCI. They had an opportunity with the $140,000 to decide to separate that between the LCI and the, and the LCCDT. That was, that was up to their organization. So I just, I get frustrated with the argument that Roseland hasn't supported. We've certainly, we've put in our portions, that $140.
Councilor, Blooming, has a vote, yeah?
Okay, so I have a bit of difficulty with this, just because, you know, $500 isn't very much money, and sometimes it's just, you know, easier to give small amounts of money, if that small amount of money will make things easier. But, I mean, I agree with what Counselor Wallace had said. You know, I also agree with what Counselor Lawrence said, actually. Where me, I sit, is this, I'm somewhat familiar with this website, and my concern and almost frustration maybe is the cost of this website, and it's sort of the value for money, like, you know, like just from a web design and website structure point of view. Yeah, as a matter of principle on that level, I do have some difficulty putting on my...
Well, I kind of agree with Counselor Fisher. Like, there's no big rush of people coming in for employment. There's no, you know, tech is hiring, you know, there's hiring steady, you know, probably going to hire, 50 people this year, but most of those people are, are local people that are picking up these jobs. I don't know where, you know, work here, live here, is that, it's going to be bringing a lot of people in, but there's no jobs. I don't think there's a big rush of jobs. There's no big plant going to open up. There's nothing, nothing going on, so I don't know what, what, what it's going to do for us. I really don't, so.
Councilor, Mark?
Well, I think it's important to do a multi-pronged approach. The communities around here have lost population, right? This isn't just for employers and employees, it's also to introduce entrepreneurs, other people who might want to come and maybe take those jobs that Counselor Fisher's talking about and move into something. It's, it's another way to get our area out and get it known in areas that it isn't known now. Outreach is good. It's like advertising, right? Advertising, you spend a lot for advertising, 50% of it is totally wasted. The key is knowing, and you can never know, which 50%? was wasted and which fifty percent was good, you know? In terms of criticism of the website itself, I mean, it's a work in project, in progress. It is developing as it goes forward. I think it's actually quite a good tool, because I do believe that different ways you reach people are, are good. You need a variety, you need a variety of that. In terms of this hundred and forty thousand dollars that we keep beating over the head, that is for the LCIC, and the LCIC is doing what they do with it, and Greg sits on that board and can talk to us all about that. The LCCDT is different. They did ask for municipal governments to each pay a very small portion, which isn't the ten dollars. Individual, it is open to individual members, and they do pay the ten dollars, and that's great. But, the cities, the municipalities were, were hope that they would contribute a little bit more. We had said, this council had said, we believed in regional economic development. We thought that was a good thing. We thought our contribution of forty thousand dollars was too much. So, we made that, we all voted for that loud and clear. So, when the LCCDT came back and basically asked us for seventeen hundred and twenty, I was pretty shocked that the group didn't see value in that, especially a group that says we value our regional relationships. I mean, let's be honest. You know, if you can't put seventeen hundred and twenty, or you can't put five hundred towards one of the few sort of regional initiatives that's separate from the regional district, separate, that's reaching out, you know, it's like, you can't really, you can't really in good conscience say you support your regional partners. I don't, I don't think. I mean, you go to the meetings, and councilor Bloomie was there, there's a wide, you know, diversity of people from the area, and there's an awful lot of offenders there, actually, that do participate in this group. And, and I, I actually think it has a lot of value. There's, there's a lot of good cross-pollination of ideas there. And, you know, I think it's just a little embarrassing that we don't support it personally, so, you know.
Hey, I think we, we, well, anybody else want to speak?
I would just say, just for the record, I've not really ever supported a, you know, as a group, like, me personally, supported the, the notion of an economic development group. I mean, I, I think I've made, I've made it really clear that you've got Community Futures sitting down in Trail, and, you know, we still haven't asked them to come up here and let us know how they could be working with us. And I do know that they funded a number of businesses on our streets, a lot of them. And they're, they're almost like a silent partner, and I wish they weren't as silent. I wish they would be reporting to us once a year, so that we knew what was going on, and maybe we could, those are the, the reason I'm saying, why create something new, or, it's not new, the LCCDT, but you've got this Community Futures sitting there, and we're not enabling it. And it's federally funded, they've got a conduit through to Western Economic Diversification that had always been there for the last twenty years. And we basically, as municipalities, because we can't put our hands on them, because they're funded differently, I don't think we've ignored them, so, we've basically ignored them.
Make a motion to invite them.
Sure. We're in a motion, though, so.
Yeah, we're in. Thank you.
After that. After this was.
Anyway, any, any further on the motion, councilor? Okay, I'm just gonna call a question on the motion. I'll favor. Oppose? Again? Favor?
Let's start.
Oppose? That was defeated. Uh, that was D. H?
H was me. I just wanted to thank Lois for providing us the report on invoices for municipal services. I think that's really helpful. I also think, if, if she'd be willing sometime when she's here, just sort of to give us kind of highlights of any particular, any particular expenditures that might be worth an explanation or something. I'm, I'm not gonna ask about anything specifically tonight, but just if there was something, some particular expense, she could say, well, that was for such and such. Because I assume we're gonna get these monthly, right? That's the intent.
The sheet comes out that is not quite exactly the same as this, that lists all the numbers that I regularly sign. Attached to it is all the invoices, so what they are. And when I sign them, if they're, I look at the invoices. So, if individual councillors now wish to come in and look at the invoices, then that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But, just to now say that you want the staff member to come in and say whatever is weird on the invoices, I don't get it. Somebody wishes to look at the invoices? They're more than welcome. Councilor Bloomie?
Um, I, you know, I'm quite comfortable with the fact that it said here, we're on account. The invoice is coming, it's very on account, lawful, municipal expenditure is authorized in the annual budget. I'm very comfortable with that. I mean, we're here in government, not in management, right? So, I feel good about it.
Anything, anybody else?
I just found it interesting. It opens your eyes to see where the money's going to. You know, it's, I found it interesting. I'm not sure if I'm in there every month, but I just, I found it interesting. It's, you know, you, you're sitting here, you don't, really don't know where that money's going. Now, you, you see some of the stuff that's, it's interesting, so.
Yeah, and those are all public. I can tell you that it's, it sometimes involves the gag reflex when you sign some of the ones that you sign. I can tell you, but they are, they are. Anyway, yeah.
I find it interesting, too. And I also find, as part of what we're trying to do to be more responsible and understand our roles here, it's nice, it's nice to see them. But, all I was asking for was just if there was some expenditure that may stand out, or there may be something, or maybe it doesn't have to be Lois. Maybe since you're familiar with all of them now, you could just say, well, there was, you know, sort of like, oh, there's a thousand dollars to Beaumont. Well, what was that for? You know, just out of curiosity, some of them are just, you know, just a sort of regular thing, so we're educated.
So, then perhaps, yeah. So, then perhaps, if, if this is gonna come to us, then it, and it's gonna come in, in the information items, which we rarely bring forward as any questions on the information. If there was an item on the sheet that someone wished to know, then they could ask that question.
Your worship, we would ask that council, if there is a payment that they'd like information, to let us know ahead of time, so we can have a look, because it's not that we know them all off the top of our heads.
And same goes for myself. Okay? That was H. Not I.
I was me. Okay, so this was in response to a motion that I didn't make. It was just a, a question that I had. Basically, it sounds like this response is saying that because this is covered under the provincial building code, code, we can't enact any more stringent standards. And I appreciate the staff's effort, but it doesn't actually address all the applicable legislation that is out there, and it does nothing to creatively solve the issue of reducing our flows, of our flows heading down to Trail. Now, as we all know, we're going to be paying twenty-five percent, basically twenty-five percent of everything that goes down through to Trail, and by not addressing some of the stormwater coming off the roofs and going into the sanitary system, we're paying for stormwater, which is basically clean water to be treated. So, the other thing that I was thinking on this was not that we would be looking at the internal functionings of these four-story buildings that we have some of, but that it would be just looking at the way water is captured on the roof, and then instead of having it go into that system, see if you could just divert it off into another, into another way. Like, have a contractor look at that and take, and, and see, what would the cost of that be? I mean, you know, if we'd looked, let's just say we'd looked at this a year ago, right? And then we went into our negotiations with, with our partners at the RDKB, we'd be able to say that we'd cut out even more than the thirty percent of the water meters did. We diverted all this other water, too. I mean, I think it's something that we really, we're looking at some huge expense coming up based on our contribution. And anything we can do to reduce our contribution would be, you know, would be, would be really good. Now, I actually did look at the community charter, and I have a bunch of sections that would allow us to do this, and I won't go into that unless there's some appetite. My, my feeling is that where there's a will, there's a way. If this council wanted to start looking at this seriously, as I, I think we ought to, because, you know, we've got these, you know, this big, big bill, that we could do it. I had another question about it, too, because the report from our building inspector said that as buildings are being renovated, steps are being taken, some are switching their drainage. And I'm just wondering, since we're, on the one hand, he's saying we don't have the ability to enact legislation about this, on the other hand, people are doing it, are they just doing it out of the goodness of their heart, or how are we compelling them to do this? And that's a question through you to staff.
Mr. Alvo, if you wouldn't mind, can you answer that question?
What I can't answer, I guess, is a legislate, is, are they doing it because of legislation or because of the code? I, I can't answer. I, I don't have that answer, for sure. The ones that have done it have, they, it was easily done without, you know, too heavy of cost. The issues are in some buildings. You can well imagine that the, the roof drains are, are one stack coming down, and in that comes off of bathrooms and, you know, other fixtures in behind the walls and stuff. So, some of them are, be extremely difficult, expensive to separate the two of them. Some of them are a lot easier. Furrow's old building, the old Pearl Harbor, which is easier, because there's only the basement and the main floor. So, they're able to do that easily.
But, when you're starting at the roof, you haven't involved the bathroom, right? You're starting at the roof, you've got water on the roof.
But, the stack, the stack itself would be an integral part of the plumbing.
Right. So, you have the roof. I'm just, I mean, maybe I'm just being too simplistic about this, but just, the water's collecting on the roof, right? Before it goes anywhere, it's on the roof. So, if you divert it off the roof, and then whatever that thing is that now takes it into the system that goes into the sanitary in the building, just shut that off, right? So, you put a, you know, and, I mean, I'm not talking about the inside at all. I'm talking strictly exterior.
So, if you have a roof, it drains to the center?
Yes.
And there you have the stack that is also the vent of the plumbing system. Are you suggesting now you change the roof design, so that the water runs off the roof?
Well, is that how they all do? They all go down to the center? Do some go this way? I mean, I, I don't know.
The ones over to the center, unfortunately, but that's the way it is.
Yeah. Because it would seem like if we had somebody look at it and, and see if it were possible, because, because it's a huge expense to us, right? And I, and I, what I see here is, we're not really, we're not really, I mean, okay, all right, if you're gonna say, if you're gonna tell me every single one goes to the center, and there's nothing to do, because, you know, there's just nothing to do.
Darren just said most of the ones to the center.
Well, maybe some of them could change.
No, you're, and, and, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Councilor Morris, right. I mean, some of them can change. It's just, we should do an audit of every building, if that's the way council wishes to go. The thing is, yes, there's, there's, there is INI from the roofs, but we've got a lot larger issues out there that I would prefer to spend money on. Catch bases, I'm sorry, manholes. That's where the majority of our INI is coming from. Today, for example, we came across an apartment building that's got two huge catch bases, and where are they going? They're going straight into a sewer. So, we're talking surface off of the street, off of the roof, off of the decks, everything's going in, into our, into our sanitary. I'd rather tackle those type of issues, or spend money on those types of issues, but the larger problems. For example, in online infiltration, the other date, you know, fifty to sixty percent of INI comes from the top of a manhole, but the surface of a manhole.
Really?
You know, that's where we should be spending our money and energy towards, to start with, and then, you know, figuring out what to do with these buildings. We do have the connections to them, which is, which is a huge step forward, because we felt those, of course, you know, we would never, you know, make it happen.
So, I think, I just, here we go with my days in ditch kind of thing, but then saying that that percentage of infiltration comes through manhole lids, so now let's just change all the manhole lids, right, to make them waterproof, right? Nine hundred bucks a lid. How many manhole lids we got?
Oh, two hundred and some up.
So, that's a budget, then. But, I think staff, and I, I appreciate your efforts to try and get the roof drains into the storm, and I, I do appreciate that, for sure. But, I think there is more cost-effective ways that we can reduce, in a very, very short term, our infiltration. So, I think that that's where, as Darren's, I totally agree. That's where we should focus our efforts. I mean, to do, to do a study on the pitch of roofs and things like that, I think it's a worthy study. However, we can get a good bang for our buck if we continue on with the examples that he's highlighted.
Then I would say it would be great to get, that because I see this as such a big issue for, it would be great to have, as, as you're going through and doing these things, like the manhole covers or whatever, to sort of have a, as part of a strategy, reduce, what, what is the stra, have a staff, have staff tell council what the strategy is for reducing INI. And maybe it is, because we didn't see in our capital plan, replace all the manhole covers, for instance, at nine hundred, a shot for two hundred of them, or whatever, right? I mean, we haven't, we haven't seen what your plans are to address, we haven't approved any plans to address INI, and I think we should do that. That's where the roof thing came from, because it seemed like, well, there's one that would be maybe not as hard, but I appreciate if there's better ones. Let's hear them, and let's do them.
Okay.
Again, councilor Fisher, I think when we talked about fifty thousand dollars for INI, we can do a whole bunch of studies downtown, you know, smoke testing through many parts of town, and spend that fifty thousand, or we can actually physically start doing the work that we know is giving INI. And I agree with councilor Fisher. I think we should, we know, we know our, our greater concerns. I think we should spend money towards repairing them and then doing a whole bunch of studies, that's.
Councilor Fisher?
You know, this is actually a good discussion, because I agree with councilor Morris on the, on the roof drain issue. I agree with the mayor on it as, as well. I think that something really simple, just a bullet-pointed thing, like, whatever your work schedule is, that you, like, you're, you need, you're not gonna keep track of that stuff in your head, is what I'm saying. So, if you just gave us not a report, just bullets, I could be in handwriting, for all I care, of, of all of the places that you want to tackle for INI this year, maybe the next three years, or something like that, just bullets, you know, corner of Second and Third, that creek is running into a manhole. Like, I know slots out there. I know people that have house drains going in, all over the place. And, and I think some of the guys that, you know, on the crew know who they are, too, right? So, you know, in some, in some of those cases, just for everybody's knowledge, there's no stormwater system. So, so, so you take it out of the sewer system, which it needs to get taken out of, and then where does the water go? The water doesn't go anywhere. Then it, then it did it back on us to put a stormwater system in, to collect all those ones that are being collected? So, that's a big issue. So, if we did, if you had a bullet, I'd like to make a motion that the manager of Public Works just gives us a bullet on his one-year and three-year plan to tackle INI. And, and if we need to do studies after the fact, that's fine, but I'm okay with having our guys with their expertise give us that.
Secondor? Councilor Bloomie, discussion?
Mine.
Okay, on that, all favor. Oppose? Carrie? That was I. Any further on I?
Greg, can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, one thought that we also have is to possibly hire a student and have them go house to house, so that we can actually physically get in basements, find out which houses are contributing, you know, through printer drains, through their porter drains, through pumps, so that we can get a better handle. I mean, councilor Fisher's right. We know fifty houses off the top of our head that, you know, contribute a lot of groundwater to the sewer. But, I think that would be, you know, money well spent, a few thousand dollars of going into every house and doing an audit. So, I mean, that's just one idea that we came up with, and I think is, you know, would be beneficial for, for low cost, as far as the study goes.
Right. And then that goes back to the, to the other fact that, well, I'll go to my old house below the tunnel, and every spring I have a creek, and I had to go into the sewer, because there's no way to get it out of there. So, we now investigate and find that Grantstone House is dumping a lot of water into the sewer. The next thing is, what do we do about it? And I think that goes to councilor Fisher's. What is, what is the cost to collect that water in another system? And that is where you're seriously gonna get into some money to do a study, because you don't put in a storm drain for five bucks. Councilor Morris?
I was just wondering if CBT might have some grant money to pay for that student, one of their projects. They have youth programs, and they have environmental programs, and they have the water smart program. There may be a way to get some help.
I don't know if Darren E. Salt maybe can, I don't know, if, if their, probably Works needs to come back to council and apply for grants, if he can do that.
Right. Well, he's talking about a student, right?
Yeah.
That's where you talked about claiming his program, right?
Okay, on that motion, all favor. We already, Carrie. Jay?
Okay, Jay was me. Also, I'm concerned about this, because we've got the nineteen-thousand-dollar recommendation that we approved, this ISL recommendation. It does not appear that it, there was a request for proposals or anything on this. I know our purchasing policy states under a delegation bylaw, the CAO is able to award contracts for consultants in some engineering projects, specifically general engineering fees, other than for a major project under the capital program. This is under a capital program, right? So, I'm just, I, I just don't want to see us go down this road of sole sourcing contracts for things when, when we shouldn't be doing that. I mean, I don't, I don't see a justification. I mean, I don't, I don't see justification for sole source contract on this, we didn't see an RFP for it, see the one bid from ISL, where are the other bids from other engineering firms on this? I appreciate the staff wants to work expeditiously on this, but we have other motivations besides just expeditious, right? We have, we've just had a whole thing, cue the auditor general, local government, and talking about making sure we're giving good value for our taxpayers' money, and I'm uncomfortable with not doing this through an RFP.
Any further on Jay?
So I'll make a motion, that I want to be put out for the engineering work on Spokane, on this, this project, Spokane Street.
I'm not quite sure if that's in order. If you're asking for a re, motion to reconsider, I don't know that I can do that, because Counselor Spierin was the one that seconded the motion.
Well...
That, that a contract, that this contract be tendered. So if you're asking for reconsideration, I can't do that without, of course, then seconding the motion here. I think that we, when this motion was debated that you made, I think we had a lot of very, very good conversations, and the reasons why that we would do it this way. So I think that your motion was, and I'll read it, an engineering firm on a contract basis, that this contract be tendered. And I think that that motion was defeated, Counselor.
It was, but it wasn't on this project, it was on the actual next one, which was the general engineering as when stuff, that's when that discussion came up, it did not come up on this specific project.
I'm sorry, then I'm confused.
This is, this first thing is for engineering...
Oh, this is great, I was on the next one, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I think my motion is...
Yeah, your motion is good, secondor? Fisher, discussion?
Okay, so, if this is coming through under the delegation by law, right, under the, under our purchasing policy that references the delegation by law that makes these kind of things, it fails under that because it is for a capital project, so it doesn't, doesn't work there. I just, I don't, I don't see any reason why we should be putting out these contracts for engineering things, engineering projects, without putting them out to tender. I, I just, I just don't see it. I don't see, I mean, I don't see urgency, this plan is, we've been needed to do this work, so what's the burning, you know, we're holding, it goes back to the whole thing about the delegation by law, you know, where I was complaining about the delegation by law and wanting to get it repealed, and I've been told repeatedly that staff isn't operating under the delegation by law, so it doesn't matter.
That's why we have this in front of us.
But I know, but, I know, but this is saying, well, we're going forward with this, with this recommendation that we approved this engineering portion, and if the basis is based on the purchasing process, purchasing policy, you can, you can do this under the power of the delegation by law, which is in our purchasing policy, it's like, stop right now, we gotta get rid of the delegation by law. We, we were supposed to redo the purchasing policy a year ago, we haven't touched it. We were supposed to redo the delegation by law a year ago, we haven't touched it. And now we've got a situation where we're putting out an engineering contract with no RFP, and no, as far as I see, no justification for not doing it that way.
Counselor Fisher?
Sorry.
I just, all that, there's a lot of stuff going on there, but let's, because let me just read something to you. It says, recommendation, I'm sure that's from staff, that council approved the engineering portion of this Spokane capital project in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. So they're not following the old, they've actually asked that we do this, and we can defeat it right now. And go with your motion if that's the case. So I, I think all that other stuff was nice and grandstanding, but it didn't mean anything.
It's a lot, but that's okay.
Well, I mean, you keep saying the same thing over and over and over, and in this particular case, you're a hundred percent wrong, and it's right there, and they've recommended it, let's defeat it.
Okay, let's...
Further discussion, Counselor Wolf?
Um, through the chair, too, our staff, is there a reason why, is there, is there some urgency? Is, why is staff asking to so forth?
Mr. Alvin?
I thought we had this discussion, like we did last time, and it was that, of course, because of our short construction season here, if we have to go to a RFP for the engineering of this project, that's gonna take three weeks minimum. Then, once we award a, an engineer, then they have to do up the plans, and drawing and stuff, so that's gonna be another month. So pretty soon, we're gonna be a minimum of two months down the road before we can tender the project, which now, what would that put us into, end of May? Most contractors will, won't even bid the job because it's getting too late in the season to have it done, which I was hoping for golden city days. So, yeah, there is some urgency, and maybe all this should have been known last year, and maybe we should have somebody in house that can take care of all this stuff, and we don't. And I don't have time to do it, and I won't do it. I don't have time. I'm out there, beating my head, I'm, you know, I just, I do not have the time. It seems Counselor Morrison's think there's lots of time for staff to be doing all this, there is not. And if you wanna do it, then hire somebody to do it, please, because, you know, I'm here.
Thank you. My questions aren't gonna be answered. Thank you.
I don't believe staff has a lot of time, but as a representative of the people of Roslyn, I think the taxpayers deserve to have proper financial procedures followed. I do. I mean, you know, we're saying we're gonna, if we start running around, we got this contract that we're gonna put out without tender, we've got the contracting services, engineering services that we're doing without tender, and I don't see where we can go to the people who elected us to represent them and protect their interests, and say that we've done due diligence on that, I'm sorry. And yes, you're probably right, we probably should have done this last year, and we didn't, and that's too bad. But that, to me, that doesn't, that doesn't make it that we should do it improperly this time, this year.
Well, the word improper is, this isn't improper, this is a council decision, staff has asked for a council decision, that is totally proper. Counselor Bloomey?
So I guess what I'm hearing here is that we would hire somebody for minimum ten thousand dollars in order to spend three months to create a tender process, and then still do the nineteen thousand dollar job, right? So to me, I mean, I'm, I'm, in this case, because of that, and because of other things we put around the table, I just have to contribute to the council decision to say we just, in this case, we have to do this, and we are deciding that we have to do this.
Counselor Fisher?
So, I'm gonna roll the clock back a long way, back to that time when the city of Roslyn had a consultant company along the time that they had Mark Martin running the planning department, Urban Systems, right? And they did a lot of the tender, the MMCD documentation and everything else, I'm just wondering if the, the acting CAO can recall how that process was put into place by the council of the day, that I think it was Profili's group that decided that having experts, the idea was this, that the city of Roslyn could hire an engineer, but we're gonna hire either an electrical or a mechanical, or, or geotechnical engineer, they're gonna have one discipline expertise. So then, that engineer might not have the qualifications to go tender, to create the MMC documentation for everything, and might not be able to inspect everything. The other part of it is, is that they would then, if they stamped something, the liability would come back to the city of Roslyn. Now, if you have a consulting firm that does it, they have a stable of engineers and technicians and all kinds of things, that they can go to when they need expertise, and they can individually stamp it, and if they make a mistake, then we have a third party that is liable, and we're not on the hook anymore. And that system that we had when we had an engineer, didn't work for those reasons, because we were still hiring consultants, because we only had one single expertise. So, my feeling is, I think we should be tendering all the big construction projects, for sure, but in the case of the engineering stuff, whether we go to RFP for the engineer consultant that we want, I think that's probably valid, you know, and in this case, if there is a bit of urgency that Darren had in this, I don't mind going, going ahead in this case, and saying, yeah, okay, nineteen thousand, but, but there's a possibility that we should, because we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we talk about having a consulting firm, engineering consulting firm, that that should go to RFP, I think. Do you know what I mean? And even if staff doesn't think I'm right on that, I, I will side with Counselor Moore on that issue, that, that part of it goes to, you know, three quotes, look at it, see who's gonna do the job, look at their pricing. I kinda know the answer already, because mostly, you know, you've got a junior engineer's priced at this, and a senior one's priced at this, and the technical staff are all priced at that, and they're all the same flat line, so that, at the end of the day, it ends up being who you're most comfortable with. But in the interest of transparency for the community, I would vote with Counselor Moore on the consulting side, but on this particular issue, I would say, let's go for it with the nineteen thousand dollars, get ISL to do it, and go from there.
Anything further on the motion? Read the motion, please.
The, oh, I'm sorry. The manager of Opry, you're still waiting for it. Staff instructed to vote to request for a proposal for the engineering for Spokane Street capital project.
Kay, on that motion on favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated. Anything further on Jay? Kay, Counselor Moore?
Kay with me, too. Now, on Kay, you can imagine my concerns. I understand we need to have engineering contract services, I am not for a second doubting that, and Counselor Fisher spoke very eloquently to the need for that. I do not understand why, we're not going to an RFP on this, I'm, I'm really disappointed in staff, actually, for this, because I think I've always been through with the auditor general, this is the perfect situation where we should do an RFP. Yes, council defeated the motion when I tried to bring it up last time, and I, and I think that's unfortunate, and actually, quite honestly, shame on us. You know, the...
Counselor, Counselor, please, I mean, if you don't like a decision of council, that's fine.
I don't like the decision of council, and I can speak to it.
Thank you very much, you had, you had every opportunity, Counselor.
Oh, come on, don't lecture me.
You had every opportunity, and council disagreed with you.
That's okay, that's okay.
So let's move on, Counselor.
I'm moving on, I'm just thinking council made a decision without thoroughly considering the ramifications of that decision.
I don't think that that's correct.
Well, whatever, anyway.
I think, I think...
I think we should have...
Just a minute, Counselor, I think you just made a statement that is not correct.
It's my opinion, it's my opinion, and I can make my opinion.
Then, for the record, say your opinion, thank you very much.
In my opinion, it's my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Shame on us, in my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So I think that when we do something as big as an ongoing three-year contract for engineering services, we should have had a competitive, open, and transparent process. There are other engineering firms here who are local, there are other engineering firms here who have the expertise, I don't see any justification for sole sourcing, none, you know? You know, I mean, the memo talks about competitive rates, well, that's great, that's great, but what are the rates of the other companies that are local? I have no idea, where's a sheet telling us that, so we, so we know that. Proven track record, you know, it's like, I'm not disparaging their engineering work, but there were some weaknesses in the reporting that we had from ISL, and the Columbia/Washington thing about their charges, right? You know, other justifications there, local office, quality and depth of service provided, these may well be attributes of other firms as well. So I don't see the sole source justification, meaning because there's nobody else that can do this work around here, you know? And I, you know, I said it before, I believe we have a duty to provide, this is gonna sound like grandstanding, but we have a duty to provide good value for our taxpayers, right?
Grandstanding?
Well, Counselor Fisher thought I was grandstanding before, and I'm saying the same thing.
Gosh, I thought you were...
So, you know...
Boy.
So, I mean, I don't know. And then I have some specific questions on the contract, but I'll let others speak what they wanna say.
Anything further on Kay?
Oh, yeah, I have more on Kay. I have more on Kay, I thought maybe other people wanted to ask specific questions on that.
That's why I asked that question, Counselor.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna shift us away.
Counselor?
I was, I was waiting for that meeting where that's, the motion was voted on, I think we probably could, could have gone the RFP route, through, through the merit of council, or to staff. I, interesting, too, is, you say the rates are competitive with all, with other firms, you know, I, how, how can you compare that? Like, I don't know. Do you know the rates of the other, other firms?
Mr. Alvin?
I do know rates of some other firms, for example, I'm getting a pool audit from a firm from Kamloops that specializes in that, and the rates are actually cheaper with ISL, not by much, but, you know, other urban systems bills that I've, I've had or seen, they're all, I mean, they almost talk to each other, because they're all pretty close.
Yeah, and I think we, we had a huge discussion on this, I think, there's, there is, there's a lot to be said with people you've been working with, the people that know, know the situation. Yeah, maybe you can get someone for five bucks an hour cheaper, but it takes them five hours to get to the point where the, where the people that know the thing are at right now. We had this discussion, long and hard, and I was being, Counselor.
Given the discussions that have proceeded so far between the city and this engineering firm, are we under obligation at this point? We haven't signed this contract yet, so is there some sort of an obligation?
No.
To this firm?
No.
At this point, no.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
Okay, I had some specific questions on the contract itself, on page seventy, seventy-seven, I guess, section five, the disbursements. You know, I found that really interesting, you've got A through whatever, we're missing page nine of the contract, so I don't know how far it goes, but, you know, we're gonna pay the, the expenses, plus a markup of ten percent on everything, so if one of these guys comes from Kamloops or wherever, and stays in the prestige, we pay the prestige bill plus ten percent. If they do any advertising for us, we pay the advertising cost plus ten percent. We pay, you know, I mean, to me, it's like, I used to, to work as a consultant, and I charged out my stupendous hourly rate, and I billed for my expenses, but I did not add ten percent on to every expense I had. So I really disagree with this ten percent markup, and it says unless otherwise specified, it's on all this stuff unless otherwise specified, and there's nowhere else in the contract where it says, no, we're not charging the markup on these things. And I made a few calls around to other engineers that I know, and I asked if this is customary to them, and the response I got was, no, expenses are not what's customary, if they build through a subcontractor, and, and they processed those invoices for that subcontractor, then they have an overhead on that, because they've got their administrative staff, you know, doing it. So yes, then they would bill, you know, ten percent. So I'm looking at this going, there is no way I wanna pay ten percent extra, and there's no way I wanna pay expenses to provide and operate and maintain a project site office, which I don't think would apply to us, since they have their office here already, but one never knows. And then, like I say, page nine is missing, so I know there's at least M, I don't know how many other things are, are missing on page nine, because M is mentioned later, so I'm a little uncomfortable with that. Let's see, what else did I have? Yeah, so I don't, let's see. Oh, then there's the variable, in B two, there's variable remuneration, and in the February proposal that we got on this same thing, it says rates would be held to the thirteen, to twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Now, rates quoted at twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, to the three years, so it sounded like when we first got this in February, there's gonna be a bit of a deal, they were holding the rates to last year's rate, but now they're not, and then increased by, you know, basically cola. So, I don't know, I'm not very happy, I'm not happy with this contract for, for many reasons, but I'm also not happy because, you know, I don't, I'm, we're missing parts of it. I'm not sure it's in the schedules, if there's another page missing, too, and I have a feeling they probably just stuck together when they were being copied for us, I'm not thinking that we didn't get it, but...
Yeah, your worst fun story, that's obviously what's happened, that's weird.
So, yeah...
If I would have known that prior, I would have had a page here.
Yeah, well, I just figured it out, you know, in the night. Anyway, so, I'm not willing to support this contract.
Anything further?
Um, I guess I need to make a motion that, I'll make a motion that we put this contract out to RFP.
Second? Fisher, discussion?
I think I've said my piece.
All favor? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, so I just would like to ask through you to ask, what would be involved in this one right now, and what's the timeframe that you need this in place by, and, what are your comments?
I, we can, with councils, I guess, because we're not going, we're going against the purchasing policy now by using them, apparently, I would need to keep, continue using them as and as and when, until the RFP closes and, and... using them as and as and when, until the RFP closes and, and another consultant is, is, you know, awarded, so.
Counselor Fisher.
Well, there's two, kinda two things, if the motion gets defeated, then, then the contract's good to go.
No, I'll make another motion.
Then, then that other motion, that's what I was concerned about, is the wording in the, the, this contract, but I, I wouldn't mind, for, for both, all the other counselors and staff, too, in that if staff is bringing us, like they did for the nineteen thousand dollar award, which is a recommendation that we've approved, so, I mean, nobody considers that that was done in, in any way inappropriately, because it came to us, it might've been, and, and we decided to sole source that particular one, to expedite it, and as staff has already pointed out, that if we did go to tender, uh, on the overall consulting service, then in the meantime, staff could also bring to us additional engineering, uh, sole source if necessary, um, until we get it sorted out, and, and to the staff side of things, ISL could win, also.
True.
Because they have a, an office here, so.
So I think, yeah, I'm having a bit of a problem with, yeah, go ahead.
Your Worship, it's just been really confusing for staff, because we had a motion on February the twenty-fourth-
Yes.
-that was that resolve that if the city is looking for an engineering firm on a contract basis, that this contract be tendered, and that was defeated, so we moved ahead with this.
I'm going back to saying that an RFP, or RFQ, whichever one of was, is, is that similar to tendering, right? That's the difference here, right? Because, as I said earlier, and wrongly, that we've had this discussion about the engineering firm, and we had a motion put on the floor, it was defeated, and we had very lengthy discussion, and staff has now come back with this contract. So if the contract, we don't like the contract, we don't like some of the words in the contract, that's one thing, but I think, well, it's, it's the will of council that if, if we wanna make motions and then defeat the motions, and then without reconsideration, just bring them back, we're just gonna go around in circles here. If we don't like the contract, let's adjust the contract, but the fact is that we've already been through this, we've already made a decision, and this would require, in my opinion, it's up to council, in my opinion, would require reconsideration, and we cannot reconsider this evening, because the seconder of the motion is not here.
Who moved the motion?
Moved by more seconders here. So, this is not up for reconsideration, unless I were to do it, and quite frankly, I'm not going to, because there's already been actions taken. So, now, if, so, the motion, Tracy, please.
Um, resolve that the contract for ASN one consulting services be tendered?
That motion is out of order. That motion is out of order. So if there's another motion, if you don't like the contract, or whatever, let's deal with that.
Okay, so, could, of course, I just probably no point in this, I'm guessing, but I'll ask anyway, could I make a motion to reconsider when Counselor Spear is here?
Well, the problem with that, yes, you could, but the problem with that is there will be action taken before Counselor Spear gets here. So once action's taken on a motion, you can reconsider. It's against the law to reconsider.
That's a procedural question. So you're talking about the mover and the seconder of a defeated motion?
Yes, for reconsideration.
I know, but, and because it was a defeated motion, and I might be wrong, but it seems that, um, it would be up to the people that defeated the motion to, to allow the reconsideration, not the two that had motioned it and seconded it, because they were defeated.
Okay, well, if you're gonna call it procedural, but I'll just tell you my understanding of that, if people that, if there are not everyone in the room, when that motion was made and defeated, if they're not all here, the motion cannot be reconsidered. It could also be argued that action has already been taken on the, on the, uh, contract. So I believe, I believe that's my rule.
Yeah, Robert.
I'll jump into the discussion, then.
Um, you know, I don't know, I'm, at this point, not feeling comfortable with obligi-, well,
going to an agreement with an engineering firm for a period of time that has, that hasn't gone out for a request for proposals. So, um, I guess perhaps I'm changing my, my stance on this one, but, but nonetheless, however we're getting around this procedural thing, as long as staff can function in the interim, I really think that we need to do this properly, and couldn't out the proposal.
Well, again, the word properly, we are doing it properly, that's why it's come to council, that's why we made a decision at the last council meeting, that was proper?
I'll take the word proper.
That was proper.
If you like.
Reconsideration of a decision of council. No bylaw, resolution, proceeding, or other decision of council shall be reconsidered by motion of council within six months except, where the motion to be reconsidered, matter has received unanimous consent of all members of council, and thereafter by majority vote of members present. So there, I was a little bit wrong. So I guess we could, what I just read, we could reconsider the motion, by unanimous, has to be unanimous. Leave that with me, just in case.
Okay, so do I need to change my motion, I, I, I just need to-
The motion now-
Make a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the decision to not send it out.
That has to be seconded.
Second.
And now, the motion, I think how we have to do that is all in favor of the motion, but not to vote on the motion, right? Because we're, the motion only has to reconsider, so it has to be unanimous to reconsider. Okay? So on that motion, all in favor? Opposed? Or just carried? So it'll be reconsidered, so then I would expect that this juncture, there's no further discussion, because it has to come back, right? Go ahead.
So at another meeting, it has to come back?
Well, yeah, I mean-
Okay.
Okay, so the motion's been reconsidered.
But on, but on the interim, now, staff, it's still utilized ISL for-
They have to come back.
But in the interim, until that comes back, manager of Public Works has already stated that he's gonna need some help, so we're just gonna go to ISL, like he will anyway. All right, everybody happy with that? That was, uh, yeah, I believe.
Kay.
Elle.
Uh, Elle, that was me, that's the resort municipality contract, I just wanted to say good work by Tourism Roslin to expand our tourism base, and I was hoping we could maybe send them a letter expressing our appreciation for the efforts of Tourism Roslin and the whole tourism sector, because they've now reached the two percent, so we're getting more funding for the, for the projects.
Do you wanna add that maybe we should thank staff for all the work that they did on this as well, because I know that this has been very consuming for staff?
Well, I think you said thank staff when we talked about this once before, but yes, but I don't think we need to send a letter to staff necessarily. I'm thinking of sending an out, something outside, but yes, we do appreciate staff's effort as well.
Well, I, go ahead and make a motion.
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion that we send a letter to Tourism Roslin expressing appreciation for the efforts of Tourism Roslin and the tourism sector, on achieving the two percent rate.
Tourism Roslin, achieving, seconder? Fisher, discussion?
I think it's just con, nice courtesy.
Yeah. Wait a minute, sorry, I can't make a, I can't second that, sorry.
Well, that's right, you're on the mark.
I can't.
Is there a seconder?
No seconder, just a thank you letter. Oh, my God, you guys, seriously. Okay, I have another question.
On Elle?
Yeah. Jody, we want to know.
Oh, I'm just thinking, why don't we just change the wording, I don't, I don't know, I'm kind of uncomfortable with that wording, it, it just didn't seem accurate, I guess, but, I don't know, we could just say, uh-
Congratulations, we, City of Roslin and Tourism Roslin, receive funding.
Or-
City of Roslin is the resort municipality, does anybody understand that? I, I don't know what we have to do here to tell people that. Anyway.
There, there must be a way of still being honest with the description of the situation, but saying something, thank you, or, I don't know, I'm sure staff will come up with some-
Sure there's things that, I, uh, anyway, that motion is down the tube, so.
Okay, okay. I can-
Well, it's a wording, it's the wording of the motion.
Saying, I mean, we do this all the time, where we send, when someone has done for their, you know, where someone's put effort in, I mean, you know, yes, we're the resort municipalities, but it's like, the Tourism Roslin, the tourism sector are the ones who deal with tourism, we're, we're not dealing with tourism like they are, right? That's all I was saying.
I understand, and I think the problem that it didn't pass is because of how you said it.
Yeah, I can never say thank you, oh, my goodness, what a terrible word.
That isn't what we're saying.
No?
That's all.
Well, how would you say it, then? How would you express appreciation to a group in the community, in the tourism sector, of which we have a member sitting right here, who better leave the room?
He's not gonna sit there very much longer, keep this up.
No, but, I mean, you know, it's, this was a small thing, it's like, it's like, is it because I said it? Is that, is that what it is? Or no, I mean, if Tim had said it, it would've been okay, but if I say it isn't?
Well, I, sure, you feel that way, but I think that I wasn't the one that worded it down, and I, I don't second motions.
It just seems silly to me, this.
Thank you very much. Counselor blew me before she breaks her arm.
Okay, I just, it's not, um, it was the, the wording in the letter that I didn't go with, so, I will, so what a motion is to say staff to send a letter of congratulations, or send to, to Tourism Roslin, what do you say, um, repres-, uh, no, to the tourism, I don't know, I don't know, I think there's a way of doing it, so it can still be nice, but just not say that Tourism Roslin is the tourism sector, you know?
No, no, and the tourism sector is what I said.
How about congratulations to all involved-
Yeah.
-for getting to the two percent or amount of funding.
There we go, and send it through Tourism Roslin, so that it, you know, gets to their news, and, so-
Lots of people were involved, not just Tourism Roslin.
And, and the tourism sector. Filter through, as Tourism Roslin being the whole base of that, and filter it in, so they're gonna send it.
People didn't, yes, that's great, so people just didn't like the way you were doing it, so that's why it happened, right?
One way surprised.
I don't know.
Was because of his wording wrong. Yeah, was word wrong. And I didn't say thank you.
Okay, so, repeating this one up pretty good.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? Carried? Carried, carried. Uh, is that it for information items?
Yep.
Your Worship, I just wanna make sure that everyone's okay with the-
Oh, yeah, the letter.
...
Yeah, is that where you get it?
Oh.
It's been, it's been vetted, this letter's-
This is in. This is in.
Yes.
This letter's been vetted through our task force, through Counselor Wallace, who's our liaison, who's the cell, through, well, through the task force, which is just the whole, the normal people, so.
Can I make some comments on it?
All right, staff, you make the comments.
Okay. Um, so, where it says following summer significant changes, I think it would be stronger if in one, we added the old numbers and the new numbers for population, because they have significant changes. Uh, I think in number two, it'd be stronger if we said that we, our estimation that we reduced our water consumption by thirty percent, because, I mean, if, if the point of this is to try and get the Minister of Environment to support us going forward, we might wanna attach some more data to it.
Your Worship, the reason we're not putting in numbers is we don't have, um, proof of those numbers. When we say that we reduced thirty percent, that's an estimate, it's not up for sure.
Right, that's why you-
So that's why we're trying to stay away from making those sort of statements.
Okay.
Because we can't prove them, and the same with the population, we don't know what the population's gonna be, their estimates, we're trying to stay away from, we're trying to only give factual.
Okay, but when we had done in one, when we had the projected future populations, we had estimated populations, but now those estimates have been dramatically reduced, and that's why we have number one in there, so I'm just saying if we use numbers and the same estimates, in number four, where we talk about the existing treatment plan increased by forty-four percent, I think that would be stronger if we had a citation for that claim. Who's, who says that, right? I don't know. If you wanna say facts, you should probably have something there.
The Kino Liquid Waste Management Plan.
Is that what that came from? Is that number?
Uh.
I mean, if, if you wanna have it, generally, my, that, those were my concerns, those were my concerns about it, is that-
I think that came from the town's course.
Is that having a little more specificity make it stronger, but if council's, the will of council is that you think it's more powerful, more general, you know, that's okay.
I think the point is, what is the point that we're trying to make? The point is that the minister said to the regional district and all, that he would like to see consensus.
Yeah.
And our point is, that we can't provide consensus, because we have these issues.
Right.
Whether it's three hundred and thirty people or three hundred and forty people, quite frankly, maybe it's stronger, however, it shows that we have a problem, and we can't reach consensus without more discussion. That is the point of the letter.
I agree with that, that's it. I just thought it'd be stronger if we had more facts, more numbers to it, but that's okay.
There's a point. Um, there's been a, a representative, at least one, from the Ministry of Environment sitting on all the planning, um, meetings, and the numbers that you're referring to are in stage one plan, they're in the stage two plan, they're accessible.
And the minister's-
So the person who's reading the letter will-
Yes.
Know that.
It is the person.
Okay, oh, great, okay, good.
Okay, on the letter, all in favor? Or, sorry, that's on the recommendations. Okay, so, we have a motion to accept the recommendations, all in favor? Opposed, carried? Uh, well, no, uh, members' reports, Counselor.
I don't know much, just that Donald Luxton's gonna file a report, and I lost my note here, it was April twelfth, right?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, I knew it was, so, that's gonna be, reschedule to the sixteenth, that.
And that's, uh-
The final report.
Yeah, and that's where museums inviting the public-
That's right, that's correct, yeah.
All gonna be out there, yeah.
This will have, had to bring up some.
Okay, uh, Counselor Wallace.
Okay, I have a few things, um, yes, and Trace, I have it typed out in front of me, so I can email this to you, so take, take it easy on your fingers. Um, so, East End Services meeting on the, on March eighteenth, um, regarding the fire service study, there, um, there was a request at the February meeting to have a subcommittee set up to look at the thirty-nine recommendations out of that report, none of them, of course, having anything to do with cost savings, and, you know, you have to chuckle at some point. Um, anyway, so, uh, the, Terry Martin, the, the chief of the service, um, had put in front of the East End Services a suggestion for a subcommittee, um, and it was representative of some of the halls in, in the service, and I made a request at the East End meeting to make sure that that was a fully inclusive group. Um, out of that report, there's significant comment about the relationship between the career crew and the, and the volleys, and that that is a piece of the service that needs to be improved, and I'm suggesting if you start this subcommittee, and it's not fully representative of all of the halls when you're starting on pre, before founding, so, um, I was supported by the East End, and so now, that subcommittee, they're going to look at the recommendations, see what has already been implemented, um, see what can be implemented without cost in twenty fourteen, it's not going to affect twenty fourteen taxation, um, and then, what would have a tax implication down the road, so that's something that we will be hearing back from at some point, I believe their first meeting is in the beginning of April. Um, so the airport has changed ownership, it is now owned by the City of Trail. There was an annual, I think it's annual inspection by Transport Canada, they came in, um, and regional district staff, as well as the City of Trail staff attended, um, but given the change of ownership, the report did not come back to the regional district staff, it went to the City of Trail staff, and, um, apparently, and this, I, I, all I know is from the news, because the regional district staff haven't received anything yet, but apparently, the City of Trail considers that there are deficiencies in how the safety and management systems, policies, paperwork, et cetera, has been managed, and they're suggesting that there's a deficiency of fifty thousand dollars, and they're gonna come after the regional district for it. Now, at the East End meeting, I asked whether the regional district staff had heard anything Now, at the East End meeting, I asked whether the regional district staff had heard anything of this yet, and no, they haven't, but it's out there in the news. So, I just wanted to say, you know, the PR machine down the hill is strong and well. Um, the old gas tanks were removed. That was part of the, um, the agreement for sale, was that the regional district would take out the old gas tanks that had originally been put in by the Trail Flying Club many, many moons ago. Um, and so that job's been done. And thankfully, there was no evidence of contamination, it went quite smoothly. Um, estimated cost for the project is around twenty thousand, we had budgeted a hundred thousand. So, that's nice news. Um, so, 2015 will be the final financial year for the airport, because in fifteen, um, we'll see any, you know, it'll be the opportunity to finalize the finances, um, because we were, we were running the first couple of months of the year out of reserves, and now we have that extra, um, money that wasn't spent on the gas tanks. So, there should be a reverse taxation happening for that service in 2015. And at that point in time, the bylaws associated with the service will be repealed. So, the proposal from the Trail District Arts Council regarding the, taking over the operation of the Charles Bailey Theater, uh, we were presented with a, it, it wasn't the final agreement. We were presented with a, um, an agreement by one of the staff members. That will be going into, make sure that it's a legal agreement, and that'll be coming back. There is, um, I think, some very positive potential in the Trail District Arts Council taking over the management of the Charles Bailey. They will certainly be eligible then for grant funding opportunities. And, um, and they do have a good body of people behind it. And certainly, you know, the regional district is not in the business of running a theater. So, it could be very beneficial for the whole area. I know the Charles Bailey Theater is a very well-loved theater in the area. Anyway, so that is coming up. Um, Old Hospital Board, we did have a budget, uh, budget meeting regarding the Old Hospital Board, even though there's no taxation anymore. But until, I think it'll be 2015 before we see the end result of the sinking fund reimbursement, or whatever you call that. So, um, so that goes on until next year. Um, Finance Committee approvals were given, and, um, so, the, the, um, Regional District Financial Plan is finalized now. And something, the regional district staff will be preparing a policy paper on reserve levels, um, identifying services which require a larger reserve, given the extensive capital that they deal with. And Sewerage is one of those. Sewerage, right now, has a reserve fund of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, I think, something like that. Now, some would consider that high. Four hundred is going into the, um, the flow monitoring project. Staff are not comfortable with, without a, a fairly wealthy reserve for the sewer function, because you never know what may happen. So, anyway, they're going to be putting together a policy paper to look at the, the various, um, services and what level of reserve may be appropriate for each. So, that's something that's coming. Um, and SIBAC, which is the Southern Interior, Southern Interior Beetle, Beetle Action Coalition, uh, will be presenting a workshop on venture capital in communities. Now, this is something that we've had little bits of discussions about before. Christina Lake has, um, been involved in, in building a venture capital, um, plan for about a year and a half now. And so I don't have any details on that yet, but, um, but it, I just, I wanted to pass that on to the council because I think there's some real opportunities there. I think there's some learning, anyway, that needs to be done. The Kootenay Booth is going to the FCM again.
Can I ask a quick question about that? The workshops that they're putting on, is that open to the public? Or who's, who's, who are the workshops for that CIBAC's doing?
I believe that they would be open, I don't have any information on it now. It was just mentioned in passing that it's coming, so I don't have any detail. Yeah, the Kootenay Booth is going to the FCM, which is in Niagara Falls. So, any promotional materials that, um, that we might want to have sent to that booth, it tends to be a pretty popular one at the FCM, so it's a good booth. Anyway, that can be taken to the AKBLG, so. And then, this one is interesting, um, just because it has a bit of a community connection, a Roslin community connection. The Kettle River Mountain Bike Society is planning on building a new trail in the Fife area up, um, um, to the east of Christina Lake. Yeah, up in that area. And they're, they plan to name it the Dave Swetland Memorial Trail. Dave Swetland certainly has connections to some people in our community, so I just wanted to mention that. Regional meeting for the, uh, CBT Community Initiative Funds is being held tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, you look happy about that. So, I will try to take very thorough notes so that when we do the process here, I can explain the reasoning of why certain things were considered to be regional at that meeting. Still a bit of a messy process, but.
Sorry to interrupt, but I, I still don't get why we need two of us there.
We don't, you don't have to go, I'll go. I'm confused. Is this the community-directed funds, the two hundred thousand dollars that came to the region? No, this is different, so is part of the, the community initiative funds is going regionally and part of it's coming to the city?
Well, I always think it would, yeah. Right?
Well, no, this was a new thing that we started trying last year, through the chair. And, uh, and it was a suggestion from a couple of the directors for the organizations that had to go to a number of different communities now, because it used to be just one at the regional district, and then it was separated to the communities. So, we tried it last year, and it's only for the applications that, um, well, yeah, they're overall, or they are more than one community, or, you know, benefit to more than one community, obviously. So, um, we will attempt it again, and I know last year, it was the, um, I think it was the Trail Skeet Club, if you remember, that, um, that we did end up, um, funding. And I think that originally, we probably wouldn't have gone in that direction, but we did, recognizing that it was a one-off ask, and that it had regional benefit, and all of the other information that I brought back from that regional meeting. That's all it's about. And there's a hospital meeting on Wednesday, and that's it.
Counselor.
Um, okay, I had an LCCDT meeting, and there was a really interesting presentation, uh, Women Creating Change. It was quite, I found, quite a stunning presentation about barriers women face in our region in poverty. And they, they had some, they had a, a video that actually dealt with local people, one of whom actually lives, at least one lives in Roslin. Um, but it's looking at the barriers of women for success, like, you know, childcare, job, education, transportation, housing, lack of a living wage, that kind of thing. And I thought it was interesting to note that in their research, it's a three-year project that they're doing, they're trying to, to tackle some of these problems. But they've determined that for a family of four, a living wage is for, for a two-parent household with two kids, that parents have to earn at least eighteen dollars an hour, which, you know, is quite a bit more than the minimum wage, so that was interesting. Um, they've identified two projects that they're working on, improving access to transportation, education, and making non-traditional employment sustainable. Um, and their point was that women get, get trained in the trades, and then they have barriers in the workplace because they're not accepted, or this and that. So, they're working, they're working with other foundations, like the Leroy Foundation, and educational institutions, as well as unions and employers, and they're getting lots of support. Um, they've created an accord, which basically is just a statement saying the different organizations support these various, you know, goals and aspirations that they've put down. I'm sure it'll come to us at some point, but they're looking for some to. Um, the other things from that meeting, CBT has funded the, uh, community-directed funds money to the, it's in the LCCD, LCCDT account. But of course, it's another board that will be allocating that. Money's just going to be invested until they're up and ready, and ready, ready to entertain proposals, and the focus will be regional projects. Um, they had a little news on trail broadband. They have a hundred and seven of the hundred and forty-seven businesses signed up for the free installation of their broadband there. And they commented that they were quite a bit more, um, successful than Nelson, who's not offering free installation. Um, and then on the Work West Kootenay sponsorship, uh, thing that they're doing that we talked about earlier, their goal is to have thirty thousand dollars, and they've gotten twenty-three thousand five hundred so far from municipalities and local businesses. And phase three of that project will expand beyond the local region, because they're getting some interest from Castle Gar and Nelson to also get their employers and their, um, you know, municipalities involved. So, they don't have traffic figures yet, but they will, and they study, still early days. And the AGM there is April seventeenth. Then, on another matter, I have a citizen complaint that I said I would bring to council. And this was an individual who suggests that our bylaw, we need to do something about our bylaw enforcement, that we should be setting a good example. And her concerns were illegal parking, trash, and dogs, and especially dogs. Um, I explained that the bylaw officer is deployed based on complaints. And her suggestion was just that a visible presence of deploying our bylaw officer downtown to sort of move people along when they're parked illegal, or remind people that dogs are supposed to be on a leash and not tied up, um, would be good. She said friendly reminders would go a long way to set the proper tone. And then, my last thing was, this came out of something in our packet when we were looking at the map in the information stuff about the transportation plan. And I saw that the old red road, um, is cut off partway through. And I'm, this is a historical question, because I know that was a gazetted road in nineteen forty-seven, and now on the map, it's not showing going through. And I'm just curious, uh, when that changed and what process was used to change it? Is that?
Your worship, if you could send us that question.
Yeah, I don't know that we could.
Okay, okay.
And then we can have a look at it for you, if it only takes fifty minutes.
Yeah, I think it's probably just because it, it's, it's on a map that the city put out, but it's not on a, yeah, I'll, I'll put it in writing. I just think it's kind of, it's curious, it's a historical bit of interest. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Just two things, uh, one going along, citizen concerns, um, we don't have a huge problem with it, but, uh, the bits of graffiti that we do have, um, in town, uh, there was a bit of a study done by some inner-city, um, I can't remember whether it was Chicago, or whether it was Los Angeles, but when the city jumped on, um, not the people doing it, but actually jumped on it and painted over it quickly, uh, it seemed to make it go way faster, which some of the graffiti that we've had on a couple of our new signs out here has been out there for a little while, so I'm just wondering. Um, I, I'm not saying, I don't know what a reasonable solution is about replacing signs that we've just put up, or painting over them, or what the solution is, but apparently, you'll get less graffiti if you attack the problem faster. Anyway, I don't think it's a big issue, but I'm just bringing that up. Somebody had mentioned it to me, and I said that I would. Um, the other thing is, is that I did talk to, um, former Mayor, uh, Profili about, uh, fire services, again. He seems to talk to me a lot about that. And, and it's not my place to strike the task force, but it might be a suggestion to, uh, the mayor that we at least look at getting one going, and maybe not, at this stage, put it in staff's hands, because they've got so much going on. But at least to keep that, keep it on the burner, to go through any of the old reports and any of the old information that they had already gathered. The task force gather it, and then do some preliminary research for us, because I think they'd be pretty keen.
We, can I just?
Yeah, jump in.
Yeah, uh, actually, there was a motion that staff look at some numbers for us, right? And as to the task force, we've had some discussions with some people. And the reason that I haven't proceeded is we were waiting for the final report, which we just got the other day.
Okay.
So, that's why we've kind of held off, because apparently, when I made a motion at the regional district, no, I didn't make a motion, that was my mistake. When I asked for, uh, clarification on the, on the fire service report, how it answers Roslin's concerns, they said that they were going to put that.
In the report, yeah.
And it didn't come.
Of course, okay.
But that's why we were waiting, and for sure that, uh.
Oh, I'm just bringing it up.
No, the next time, next time you see Mr. Profili, tell him he's can, he can chair another one.
Okay.
Good.
Anyway, yeah, that's, uh, certainly underrated. Anything else?
Nope.
As a reminder.
Um, okay, so, I came here with just two things, but triggered ideas here. That, um, the bylaw officer issue, um, I'm wondering if perhaps the bylaw officer, particularly when she was bylaw officer, meaning if she wore a vest that actually said, or something that actually said bylaw officer, and people saw her, you know, walking down the street wearing something that said bylaw officer, perhaps that would help make the decision.
I think it's just a high vis bib.
So, if we had a high vis bib that said bylaw officer on it, um, like in Nelson, when you see the guys walking around saying bylaw officer, it's kind of in their old, or.
Well.
Beyond my good behavior.
Good suggestion, maybe, uh, maybe we can look into the purchase of a high vis bib that says bylaw officer on it.
Okay, good.
Knowing full well that, uh, the bylaw person is involved in formal work.
Well, exactly, and it's, it's a psychological effect, but it could be a positive one, right?
I get it, yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, and then further to the, um, the LCCDT presentation, I just wanted to point out, um, I know that Counselor Moore said this, but I wanted to make sure. It sounded like eighteen, oh, I think it was eighteen oh five, but anyway, eighteen dollars an hour, the parents have to make eighteen dollars an hour, but it's actually each parent has to make eighteen dollars an hour. So, I'm sure that's what you're saying, but just to point that out, because I think that's, that boggled my mind, actually. Um, and, uh, oh, and within that presentation, I thought a very important message from that was, um, there was sort of a, I don't know, incidental discussion on, on, uh, B C transit and public transit, I guess. You know, I mean, just as an example, a single mom who needs to, with no car, who needs to take her kids to, let's say, grandmother's house before going to work or before going to school, you know, that can take up to two hours each way if there's no public transit. And, um, there are, well, there was one who was, one woman who was saying that's what she's doing every day. And so, you know, I think in that particular situation, it was because of, um, well, something that contributes to the length of time is because of that, um, the old bridge is now closed. Um, so she has to circumvent a lot. But, um, yeah, anyway, it was just touched on that B C transit, or public transit is actually incredibly very important to, uh, to some people, to the point where, you know, it makes what they're doing possible or not. It's not just a matter of convenience, or, you know, nice, let's try this out, or let's save a few bucks on gas, or, you know, it's not at that level when, um, when you're in this kind of predicament. So, we do really have to keep that in mind when we get our, our checks or our invoice from, what is it, a hundred grand or something a year, or is it even two hundred now? I can't remember. At any rate, the, it makes a big difference in some people's lives, they have to remember that. And to the Counselor Fisher's discussion on the, the changing, or the painting over, getting rid of graffiti immediately, I did come across a study like that a few years back. And, um, I think in the one that I came across, it was twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours. Um, so, yeah, if you get rid of it within twenty-four or forty-eight hours, it makes a significant difference because of a lot of graffiti. It's more, you know, they want to see their mark, right, it's their tag, is there. And so, if they don't get that sense of affection, then, you know, what's the point? Tell me once, and they won't do it. Um, my, what I wanted to say, actually, was SIBAC, I had resubmitted. So, the broadband grant application for SIBAC, um, that was for thirty thousand dollars. That was submitted last year, and then we were told, no, there's no more, you know, no more funds for this fiscal year. And so, now in the, the new year, or in time for the, um, I assume it's the first session of go-around went in, I submitted it, kind of changed it and submitted it again, and, um, we got a no back. So, did not get a no.
Right.
Um.
Did they give a reason?
I asked for an official letter to submit to you guys, and maybe it'll be in there, but no, no reason. I mean, I had been told by Grace McGregor before submitting it the first time that it was a bit of shot in the dark, and that because we have other resources, we're, you know, we're not heavily, um, wood-dependent around here in Roslin. And so, we give other opportunities, and, uh, I'm going to assume that that's the one that carried through, but maybe we'll find out in the letter. And then I just came across an article that I thought was kind of funny. Discussions that went that long legs of last year. So, it's, uh, in the Kootenay Arts E-Bulletin, and, uh, "City of Nelson Seeks Proposals for Creative Bike Racks." "City of Nelson is seeking design proposals for bike racks to be installed in five locations in downtown Nelson. Entries are encouraged to be as creative as possible while meeting the need for racks that are durable, easy to install, affordable, and use side office efficiently." Um, anyway, I just thought it was funny, because, I mean, I hundred percent appreciate everyone's approach to this and how it came out. I'm a hundred percent satisfied, and, you know, fine, but I just thought it was funny, because I was like, see? I just thought it was funny, because I was like, "See, I'm not crazy."
Wow.
It was kind of, I don't know.
Creative outside.
Anyway, I just thought it was funny.
Good. Thank you very much. So just a few things. First of all, I got an email, and I think it was in the information package from the Royal Canadian, that they're minting a Lucky Looney coin in commemoration of Kimberley Joins that should come to the city of Roslyn this week, I think, is what it said. And then they're asking us to take a picture of it and send it to them, and it's gonna go on their Facebook page, just so you're aware of that. The Mayor's Caucus is, I don't know if you're aware of that, is coming up the year last week of April, and that's in Cranmore from Kimberley. Interesting project that the museum has going on is they're interviewing old-timers in the community to get their thoughts and recollections on digitally recorded. So I had the pleasure of sitting down with Willie Wolfsford, who's one of the pushers for the museum, and Al Dixon, who's ninety-seven. And we spent a couple hours reminiscing about Roslyn. It was quite enlightening. It's a really neat project. I had a meeting with the CAO of County Basin Trust regarding a few initiatives, of which will be coming back to council. Amy Ambrosoni will be at council on April fourteenth, I believe it is, coming to council April fourteenth to give us a presentation. I just, it's interesting that Counselor Moore mentioned the free installation of fiber down the trail, and that came up in our conversation, actually. And of course, for businesses and trails, it's a no-brainer, because what they do is they run the fiber to your, all you have to do is say yes, they'll run the fiber to your building, but then you don't have to guarantee that you're gonna sign up for the service. So basically, all they're doing is running free fiber without any guarantee of booking into the system. So I think it's important that everybody in Roslyn understands that. It is, it's free, but it's a cost without any revenue guarantee to it. So it's thought that that should make that point. Cook versus Cook, another one of my projects. As we all know, Cook is spelled with an E and sometimes without an E. The historical, factual, correct spelling of Cook is without an E. J., I'll forget his middle initial. Anyway, J. Cook, in eighteen ninety-seven formed a partnership with Ross Thompson and a guy named Richie, who was a surveyor. Cook, without an E, became partners in the township with Thompson and Richie. There was no E. The maps from eighteen ninety-six showed no E on Cook. Cook School, which was Cook Avenue School, which was the school on Cook Avenue, had no E. And we've, I don't know how much more research you can do. Anyway, Cook with an E is not correct, and I would like it corrected. So there is, we have done some initial investigation as to what it would cost someone with Cook on their license, and what it would cost for signing, and it's minimal. So I would like that to this, I would like council to support me on a slow and steady return to the historical name Cook. So I'm asking if anyone would move that.
A motion that we support you?
Yes. Well, no, 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 I don't want to get too carried away. No, just to put Cook back to its historical correct name.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
With more?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Thank you. I have way too much time.
I was gonna say, perhaps you'd research the red road, then.
I probably already know.
History buff.
Okay, that's it for the meeting. I need a motion that we recessed in camera, that the meeting of March twenty-fourth, we closed the public pursuit of the section ninety-two E, order general local government public community charter. Moved by. Fisher seconded by Thatcher. Discussions, all in favor? Carrie, two minute break, we're running camera. Thank you very much to the press for your...
I'll get out of your hair as fast as I can here.